Welcome to the January 28th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. No call, Mr. Nusio?
Mrs. Bratz?
Present.
Mrs. Carpus?
Present.
Mr. Kreis?
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Present.
Mr. Vaughn?
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to confirm that all board members and administrators are connected to this meeting. So if each person was confirmed that they can see here or both when asked, please do so. Mr. Vaughn?
Both.
Mrs. Bratz?
Both.
Mrs. Carpus?
Both.
Mr. Kreis?
Both.
Dr. Smilak?
Both.
Mr. Nusio?
Both.
Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
I can confirm that, sir.
Thank you very much. Board members and administration, if at any time during this meeting you cannot hear or see the other participants, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed. Dr. Smilak, please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting. And if the livestreaming stops for any reason, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed. This meeting will be conducted electronically in accordance with amended substitute House Bill 197 and House Bill 404, as more specifically detailed on the notice attached to tonight's agenda and on the screen. With that, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0135, Resolution suspending the requirement for in-person meetings under board bylaws.
Second.
We have motion second for 2021-0135. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Not back yet?
She's back. Amanda?
Oh, it was muted. I'm sorry. I said yes.
Okay. Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-0135 has been approved. Information to the board. Dr. Smilak?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity and I'll just share a few notes about status. You know, we continue to weigh a good number of variables in terms of determining our level of in-person instruction we provide. We're thrilled to have our students back in hybrid. They seem thrilled. Our teachers are thrilled. So it is really an encouraging start to our third quarter. If we were to change anything, it would not be during the third quarter. We will have continuity in a hybrid format throughout the third quarter, unless certainly we move to yellow on our, you know, status symbol from Kegga County, although that's quite a leap from where we are right now. We know that we continue to learn more about vaccines and their availability. We know that the governor has prioritized educators as wanting, you know, to get vaccines to us as soon as possible. We do not have a set date from the state of Ohio at this time. A lot of innuendo about when we may actually be scheduling for vaccines. We just, anything that I would say right now would be speculation. Obviously, we're hopeful for, you know, the sooner the better, obviously. And we're hopeful to get more clarity by tomorrow. We are promised dates by tomorrow. And so we will, we will, you know, obviously pay very close attention to our email inboxes. But the other piece is that, you know, we have a second strain of the virus that has really started to just appear in Ohio. There are medical experts calling for another shutdown, actually. And certainly we hope to avoid that. So we'll continue to monitor. In the meantime, I will say that particularly our curriculum and instruction department with Tiffany's leadership. But beyond that, our teachers through their school leadership teams or building leadership teams and our principals really all collaborated on how to make hybrid better. That was a question that we knew we had to unite behind. We had a lot of concerns about overall downtime, the first time we went through hybrid. And this time has been much better. We're two weeks in. Our teachers, and I watched yesterday, I watched a middle school teacher. She had her kids on her screen for about five minutes at the beginning of the period. Students in the, in the classroom were sitting and doing their bell work. She was interacting with the kids at home through her screen. She then released assignments for them to complete, saw if they have any questions, and sent them on their way. That really has been the vision of what we wanted to implement. We wanted students to stay on their bell schedule. We wanted that interaction with the teachers. But we also wanted our teachers to be able to focus on the students in the classroom and not try to deviate their attention in two different places. So I was thrilled when I witnessed that really firsthand yesterday in one of our middle school classrooms. And I know that's happening really across the board. So thank you to our teachers. Thank you to our principals for putting your heads together there. Thank you to Mrs. Stropko and her department for leading that effort as well. Again, the charge was to make hybrid better, and I am confident to say that it absolutely is better during our second venture here.
Good to hear. Thank you very much. Any other information for the board tonight, Dr. Smilak?
No, sir.
Communications, Mrs. Carpus?
Um, I do just have one quick thing, actually two. I just wanted to say thank you to Amy, Gary, and Audrey for all their work. For whoever hasn't seen them, they brought all the board members in and really gave us a chance to talk about who we are. And one of the things that, you know, as hard as we go through and we get criticism and stuff is when I hear people say negative things about my colleagues. And I really just felt like so far, Jack, we're still waiting on yours tomorrow. But it really shows the people that I've come to love and work with. And I am so honored to work with you guys, and I'm just so grateful for their work showcasing you guys. It really truly is a work of art to see it. And then the other thing, so I missed, obviously, the last board meeting because of my sickness. But, right, I wanted to really just give a shout out. As a parent, I got to experience the day after what happened at the Capitol on January 6th, what teachers were dealing with in their classrooms with students from, you know, first grade all the way through high school. And our teachers handled that with such grace. And they were able to navigate these difficult questions. Kids didn't know what to do. Parents didn't know what to tell their kids about what happened. You know, you could hear everybody's news broadcast in the background and even that day when it was kind of happening in real time. And our staff really took a deep breath and put our kids first and made sure that our kids knew, you know, that we were still, you know, our country was going to be there. And they really, I cannot express how important that was in those moments. And I couldn't even name all the teachers. There were so many of them. But I heard it from every building level that my kids were in. And it was just, that level of professionalism is unmatched, and we are so grateful. So it's just a reminder that we do truly have the best staff here.
Well said, Amanda. Thank you. And I also agree on, well, agree on everything you said. And, you know, kudos to the people that interviewed the board members and put all that together. You know, how they took basically about 40, 45 minutes and did it into a minute is beyond me, but was, you know, came off very well, I thought.
Yeah, the rock stars, that's for sure. That whole group. They're rock stars.
The group.
Yeah, to make us look good, huh?
That's talent.
Kidding, everybody. Just kidding.
Treasure, do you have anything today?
Do. The Audit of State gave our financial auditors another one-month extension because the compliance supplements, what they need to test one of our federal programs, has not been released by the Audit of State. So now the due date is back to February 28th, which I hate being behind, but there's nothing I can do. It's out of my, out of my control. So that's the status of our audit right now.
All right. Do we have a PTA council report tonight, Dr. Smilak?
Yes, I believe we do.
Hello. Other county council president, I'm reporting tonight for council.
Good to see you.
Yay, thank you. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Um, okay, so we have a lot of different things that are actually still going on. On Wednesday, December 9th, Parma Council of PTA hosted a winter raffle basket fundraiser. Usually we have a winter luncheon around that time. Unfortunately, we had to cancel, but we were still able to host a raffle basket to raise funds. The money for this event is allocated to our community scholarship program. So we were excited to still be able to have that online raffle. And we're going to use that to replace some of the fundraisers that we do for community scholarships. So if you missed that fundraiser, we are doing one for February. It's going to be February 1st through the 9th, where you can purchase tickets online through our Cheddar Up account. We'll have pictures and links posted on our Facebook page and Twitter. And tickets are six tickets for $5, 15 for $10, and 35 for 20. Again, the proceeds are going to go towards community scholarship. It's nice because traditionally we give out one scholarship per high school and the amount anywhere between $500 to $1,000. And this scholarship is pretty unique because we traditionally would collect loose change throughout the community. Mrs. Bratz is the chair for this, and she would have her little, what are those, candy little jars, plastic empty tubs that would go throughout the schools and different places? And, you know, obviously with people not in the buildings, we haven't been able to do that. And we also would collect money for this via a donation. So you could donate like $10 for "In Memory Of" or $25, different things. And we've had different groups that give back to that. So we're pleased to still be able to collect money and be able to put towards a community scholarship for them. So if you're interested in donating or emptying your piggy jar, you know, contact Cindy. She loves to count pennies.
Better dollars.
And dollars. Paper is always better. The dirtier, the better, the, you know, she loves the paper stuff, too. So yeah, so we'll, we're going to continue to do that. We're planning on also doing one for our March and our Founder's Event and in the spring. So to hopefully put money towards that. We are currently accepting nominations for our annual T and PTA award, along with our Helping Hands Awards. Usually PTAs in our district nominate somebody from the building. I know this year's been a little bit unique, but I know that we have plenty of people who are going above and beyond in their buildings for our kids. So those are due back to us, and we'll usually present them at spring luncheon. But we're still planning on acknowledging them and presenting them sometime in the spring. That application is on our district webpage. Our scholarship program is well underway. Seniors are actually finishing up their applications. So those will be getting collected in the next few days. They are due back to their guidance counselors by Friday, February 5th. And we will be having a workshop for the scholarship sponsors via Zoom on February 9th. That's 7:00 PM. So links are being sent to the sponsors. If anyone is interested in attending, please let us know. It'll go to Pam, because I think she's our contact for the school board scholarships, and she can send that out to you guys in case you want to attend. Our next council meeting is Wednesday, February 10th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. All are welcome. So if you'd like the link, you can contact us at our email, our Gmail, and we can send it out to you. It's always great to have a school board member present. This year for reflections, we had a lower turnout than usual, but we did have 12 students that have entries that were submitted down to Columbus. So we're looking forward to hopefully seeing some of them move on from our unit to Ohio PTA, maybe onto National. Due to COVID, we will not be having our annual awards ceremony. Usually at the end of February, we invite our students that had artwork in the calendar along with participated in the reflections program to come be recognized at the Parma Senior High Cafeteria. And we give them certificates and they get a chance for a picture with Dr. Smilak. Obviously, that's not doable right now. So instead, we will be submitting certificates to the students and giving them a little gift to congratulate those that have moved on. Another disappointing thing that we won't be able to host this year is our babysitting course. Usually we have that in March. Unfortunately, we're not going to be able to, we had to cut our short last year because of COVID and the paramedics producing, presenting the first aid and CPR course. And right now, at this point, we're not comfortable putting that out there, and they are not available. They're recommending to do any of those certifications. They're focusing on just recertifying those medical professionals that are required to have it. And last but not least, we will be having an annual Founder's Night. We are excited about this. It is going to be a virtual one. We are planning some fun and festive activities. We are asking that if you RSVP by, the invites will go out. Everyone's invited to attend. We're planning on doing a little gift for those that are, attend our evening. So you can just email us and we will send you the link. That event is going to be March 24th, and we'll have more information at the next meeting. Along with geranium sales are going to start before you know it. So that'll be coming up at the next meeting. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the information. Yes.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
And I love it.
Well, I don't know how to get attention. Trying to be respectful. That's sometimes hard for me. Heather, thank you for coming tonight. That was a great report. Thank you for highlighting the community scholarship. I'm really grateful for that. And of course, as with everything else, it's been a challenge this year. But more than anything, I want to thank PTA Council, PTA Presidents, PTA Officers, Chairman, and members in all of our buildings. This has just been an unbelievable challenge, and I've got a 40-year history in PTA. So I, I know the work that goes into it. I know what is involved. And what a challenge you folks have met guiding parents through this process of COVID and having to pivot really fast and still make great things happen for kids. And encouraging parents to be involved. As we all know, when they are involved, their kids do better. So thank you much for all you do. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Cindy. Any other communications from any other board members? Okay, saying none. Do we have any amendments today?
We do. 2020-01-47, it's for the then and now's over $3,000. We do not have it. We're eliminating that resolution.
So when we get to that, we don't have to do anything with it?
Correct.
It's obvious.
Okay. Then I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0136, Adoption Amendments.
Second.
I have motion second to adopt Resolution 2021-0136. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-0136 has been approved, and the then and now will not be done as an amendment. At this time, do we have any public participation?
We do not.
We do not. Move to adopt Resolution 2021-0137, Approval of the Written Record of Proceedings for the January 14th, 2021 Regular Board of Education Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-0137. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
2021-0137 has been approved. Brings us to curriculum. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-38, Approval of Agreement Between Avalon Center for Student Success and the Parma City School District. Second.
We have motion second for 2021-0138. Questions or comments?
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
We're always looking for ways to educate instead of punish when necessary or when possible, I should say. And this is an agreement that will allow us to have an educational option for students caught vaping in school. So we're excited for this agreement. Unfortunately, it is a too-common occurrence at our high schools. And we want to educate our students as to the dangers of vaping. That's why we brought forth this resolution.
Thank you. Agreed. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. That was 38, right? 2021-0138 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss in curriculum, this concludes for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. Business, Mr. Kreis?
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-39, Authorizing Purchase of Chromebooks.
Second.
Yeah, motion second for 2021-0139. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes. 2021-0139 has been approved.
I, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-40, Authorizing Renewal of Chiller and Boiler Maintenance Service Agreement.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second for 2021-0140. Questions or comments?
Didn't we just do this?
This is, this is one we, I think we do annually.
Oh, okay.
Similar, but it wasn't this agreement, Mrs. Carpus.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0140 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Kreis. Back at you with finance.
Yes, I, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-41, A Resolution Determining to Proceed with the Submitting to the Electors of the, of the School District, The Single Question of the Issuance of School Improvement Bonds in the Aggregate Principal Amount of $271 Million for the Purpose of Constructing, Furnishing, and Equipping New School Buildings and Facilities for Grade 6 through 12 on Two Campuses, and Otherwise Constructing, Renovating, Remodeling, Adding to Furnishings, Equipping and Otherwise Improving School District Buildings and Facilities, Including Improvements at the Existing Parma Senior High School, and Clearing Improvement and Equipping Their Sites, and the Levy of an Additional Tax of Point, of 0.4 Mils to Provide Funds for the Acquisition, Construction, Enlargement, Renovation, and Financing of General Permanent Improvements to the Electors of the, of the School District pursuant to Section 5705.218 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Second.
We have a motion second for 2021-0141. Questions or comments?
Um, so can we just quickly recap for anybody what the difference between this one is versus what was on the ballot?
Yes.
Yeah.
There is no difference, actually. The only difference is interest rate. The interest rate dropped, and so we were able to, obviously, when you're borrowing a tremendous amount of money and you are able to attain a lower interest rate, it's going to, you know, change the amount that you have to borrow. So it's, it's 6.5 was the original request. We're now at 6.3. The dollar amount, I think, is $18.28 now per month, as opposed to $18.96 per month, which we were at in the fall. But the only difference is the interest rate. There is no change in the facilities.
Because that was a very well-vetted plan that we went through to come up to that. So that's where we, I just, so the public knows. That's why it's not a different plan, because this is what we put all the legwork into, to go through with.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, Resolution 2021-0141 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-42, Approval of a Contract with Julian and Grub Inc. to Update the Uniform Guidance Policies.
Yeah, motion second for 2021-0142. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0142 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-43, Resolution Authorizing Sale of the Former State Road Elementary School for $725,000.
Second.
Yeah, motion second for 2021-0143. Any comments?
Can I make a comment again? Just again, and we emphasized this when we voted to put it up for auction. But this does not, you know, say that we have now decided where elementary schools are going. We've been very clear and consistent and transparent in saying that we're holding on to our properties until we would decide where elementary schools would go, and that would require a second phase of a bond issue. This particular property was too small. When we consolidate elementary, the plan is to go to six. And we would not plan to put one of those six on something that is 3.9 acres of land, given the circumstances that we know of right now. So just want to be clear that we still have not decided where those are going to go. It's just that this was a great opportunity to recruit some funding from Drug Mart in this case, or a piece of land that was of no longer use for us.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Smilak. That's excellent information and needs to be out there. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0143 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-44, Approval of the December 2020 Financial Report.
Second.
Yeah, motion and second for Resolution 2021-0144. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0144 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-45, Ratification of Investments.
Okay.
Motion and second for 2021-0145. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0145 has been approved.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-01-46, Approval of Supplemental Appropriations.
Second.
Motion and a second for 2021-0146. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer?
Yes, 2021-0146 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-48, Acceptance of Contributions and Inventions.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second for 2021-0148. Questions or comments?
I do want to just thank Michael Sennich for his donation towards the Athletic Department of Parma Senior High. As always, we appreciate when the public remembers the Parma City Schools. So we thank you very, very much.
So I remember there were Sennich brothers that were really qualifying tennis players.
They were the only, only champions from Parma High. State champs in individuals and double sets.
Yes. Michael Sennich?
Yes.
Wow, super.
Good guys.
Yeah. Thank you.
He went to Michigan.
Oh, well. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Kreis?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz?
Yes.
Mr., Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Twenty twenty-one oh one four eight has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much this evening, Mr. Kreis. Anything with legislation today, Mrs. Carpus?
We do. There's two, two quick pieces. Well, one, I encourage everybody to continue to follow the legislators' efforts to kind of create a moratorium on the state testing and, or not use it for kind of penal purposes to the public school districts going through everything this year. Your legislators are very receptive to listening to you, so please reach out to them. There are two pieces that are quite, that are interesting that came out. The first one is Senate Bill 68 and it was signed into the law, into law and it impacts Ohio driver regulations. Pretty much the elements are, requires the State Board of Education to adopt a model curriculum for high school students on proper interactions with police officers during traffic stops and other encounters. In doing so, the State Board Director may consult with any interested party, including a volunteer work group, convene to make recommendations regarding this instruction. A reasonable period for public comment must be provided before the curriculum is finalized. Wire school districts and other public schools to use the State Board's model curriculum and at least one course already required for high school graduation. And then after soliciting input from local law enforcement, driving training schools, the community, a district or school may modify the curriculum for more appropriately serve the needs of its particular students. So this is one thing that is in the works. And then another piece that was signed in the beginning of January is a dyslexia screening bill. Dewine, I apologize, I'm almost positive he signed it, but I'm not a thousand percent. But it is moving forward and I know that Mrs. Stropko has already been well in reach with this. But the essential part of it is that children in Ohio will now be screened for dyslexia and teachers will get training on it. So it's just another piece to make sure that none of our students kind of fall between the cracks or through the wayside. And it's, you'll see some, I'm sure as time goes on, Tiffany will have lots of information for us about, you know, how that works and everything. But those are the pertinent legislative updates for right now.
Thank you very much. Excellent report. This time, we move to Human Resources. Mrs. Bratz.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-01-49, Resolution to Extend in Limited Circumstances Emergency Paid Sick Leave Under the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act.
Second.
Thank you.
I have a motion, the second for 2021-0149. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty twenty-one oh one four nine has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0150, Approval of the Following Certificated Exhibits, Confirmation of Stipend Amounts, Confirmation of Substitute Teacher Appointments, Confirmation of Supplemental Appointments.
Second.
We have a motion, the second for 2021-0150. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Twenty twenty-one oh one five zero has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0151, Confirmation of Certificated Administrative Appointment.
Second.
A motion, the second for 2021-0151. Questions or comments?
I, I can make a comment. We're just thrilled to have, you know, again, an internal candidate who has really dedicated her career to our district and is very highly thought of at Normandy. This is an interim appointment in that we had essentially resignation toward the end of the year. We've assigned that person to home for, to finish this school year. So it's an interim that, that could likely turn into a, a long term, but that would be something that we can answer this summer. But Michelle Kensington Smart is extremely qualified and extremely highly thought of throughout not just Normandy, but the district.
I did all that.
That's a great lady.
That was a bit higher. That's a good one. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty twenty-one oh one five one has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0152, Approval of the Following Classified Exhibits, Confirmation of Classified Appointments and Replacements, Confirmation of Change of Classified Assignments, Confirmation of Classified Resignations, Approval of Classified Non-Compensated Leaves of Absence, Approval of Classified Stipend.
Second.
Motion, the second for 2021-0152. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty twenty-one oh one five two has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0153, Authorization to Release from Employment During Probationary Period, Classified Employee.
Second.
A motion, the second for 2021-0153. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty twenty-one oh one five three has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0154, Abolishment of End User Support Supervisor.
Second.
A motion, the second for 2021-0154. Questions or comments?
Charlie.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to make a few comments. We recently received a resignation from our Technical Systems Manager who is moving on to a different district. And while Mr. Stevens was a phenomenal asset, he's grown a very strong team and we believe we'll be able to manage his role with the folks that are in, in, internal to our district right now. So there's a series of, of moves here that you're going to see that essentially let us consolidate, actually. And we're always looking to be as efficient as possible. So that consolidation will save the district some operating funds as we, we move ahead. And that's what these, these movements are related to in the next few resolutions here.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, did Mr. Vaughn, did you second that motion?
I did.
Okay.
I did. And I do want to mention, yeah, since he is moving on, I will miss Mr. Stevens.
Agreed.
Good person. Yeah. Good guy.
I, I, I thought a lot of him. I still, well, I still do.
Yeah.
I, I think a lot of him, I guess, is the appropriate way.
I'm a little bit mad at him for leaving, but.
There you go.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Yes. Resolution 2021-0154 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0155, Creation of Manager of Technical Systems and Adoption of Job Description.
Second.
Oh. She woke up. She woke up.
Motion, the second for 2021-0155. This, they, this one is, as, as the previous one, Dr. Smilak and the next one are all related to reorganizing that particular unit of the, of the district, correct?
Yes, that's exactly right. We're just shifting some responsibilities. The responsibilities in total of the department haven't changed. We had, needed to realign some job descriptions to match exactly who was going to do what in this reorganization.
No problem. Any other questions? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, twenty twenty-one oh one five five has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-0156, Creation of Administrative Specialists for Technical Systems and Adoption of Job Description.
Second.
We have a motion, the second for 2021-0156. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Twenty twenty-one oh one five six has been approved.
Unless there are another board member has anything to discuss this evening, this will conclude Human Resources.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bratz. Well done. The move to policies.
Yeah.
Carpus.
Yes, sorry, guys. I'm just a little bit slow. This is my most adventure in weeks, so.
Oh, you're hanging in there, kiddo.
I'm, I'm doing it. All right, so I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-01-57, Approval of the New Policy 6114, Cost Principles Spending Federal Funds.
Second.
Motion, the second for 2021-0157. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mr. Kreis. Mr. Kreis, can I mute?
Sorry, my dogs are barking again. Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Twenty twenty-one oh one five seven has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-01-58, Approval of Revised Policy 6325, Procurement Federal Grant Funds.
Second.